Oh, that's right. Good afternoon, everybody. Hey, I'm Anna Eller here with you this afternoon. And boy, do we have a show for you here today. That's right. We are live here in studio with WCRS, right here in lovely Greenwood, South Carolina. We are getting ready to talk with Kathy Miller and with Mark Allison, both on county council. And in fact, this is going to be an exciting conversation. I hope you're going to listen up if you have a question or a comment. The best way between now and 6 o'clock is going to be to text me. Of course, you can leave a question if you'd like on the answering thing, but I probably won't get it. But if you have a question, 864-229-7984. That's 864-229-7984. So without further ado, I want to welcome our guest here today, Kathy Miller. How are you doing today?
I'm doing great, Anna. Thank you so much for having us today.
Absolutely.
I always look forward to my time with you.
Okay, I hope you're right. All right, you need to be a little closer to that mic. You can pull it over there a little bit.
Okay.
And also, we have Mark Allison here. Mark, this is our first time of having you on the radio. How are you doing today?
I'm great, Anna. Thanks for allowing us to come and share some of the thoughts we have with the council. That's what we want to do, is let the people know, you know, be transparent about our upcoming budget.
Absolutely. And I want it to be perfectly clear that y'all asked to come on the radio here with me. I mean, Kathy, you had actually contacted me about coming on.
We talked and we were having conversation, and we both agree that it would be probably a good idea for everybody to hear because Mark and I are closely aligned with making sure that the public is informed with what's going on and with the budget being such a big decision and potential impact for the citizens. We wanted to give them the opportunity to hear any questions that we have had with the budget as well.
That's right. So this is an opportunity here today. And I know budgeting is going on everywhere, whether it's the school board, the city, everybody is doing a budget at this time. So Kathy, you know, one of the jobs of the... I always call her the fixer. Why do I call her the fixer? Because she's worked for just about every nonprofit, and you even were the treasurer for a part of time.
I was, Anna. Thank you, because I think that diverse work experience is what brings me with a different perspective with the whole process, to have gone through the budgeting process with the county during that year and a half that I was with them. So yeah, I think it allows me to maybe have a different perspective and entitles me to ask a lot of questions, which I told everybody on the front end I was gonna do when I was elected to county council. So I've asked the current council to be patient with me, as I have asked a lot of questions, but it's always very politely and very productively.
Well, you know, I think you come from it somewhat a little bit different than what everybody that has not been in the position that you've been as the treasurer there. How long were you the treasurer?
I was there about a year and a half, so I did go through a budget cycle, which was very informative for me to do that. But I'll go back through, you know, in my 40-year career, years of budgeting in major manufacturing operations with, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars to go through, and the process is there. And then smaller nonprofits as well with budget, but everybody has a budget that had to be approved every year. So it is a process. Some of them are a lot more detailed than others.
Absolutely. So what type of budget process? Let's say it this way. What type of budget process does the county employ as a way to do it?
Okay. And Mark, you jump in at any time. So I'll give you kind of the macro level view, if you will. So probably January, February, the county treasurer, who does a remarkable job for the county, absolutely, she will pull together data and load into a software, the county software system, I think it's called Munis, if I remember correctly. And she will load in what the current year budget is, what the year-to-date actually is, and probably do some forecasting on where they're going to end for the year. And then she releases that data to all the department heads for them to actually put in what they think they need for the next year's budget. At that point, then, they will come back and meet with the county treasurer in one-on-one meetings with the treasurer and go through all their budget requests. And then, I think there are some other meetings between the county staff, the county manager, and whatnot. And they basically then say, this is what we're approving. It may not be exactly what the department head has asked for, but it's what they're approving as a staff member and team that they will then be presenting to county council. So that's the big level picture.
So unlike the city, which has all their people sit in on, all the department heads sit in, you do... county council does not do it that way?
No. And I don't know if this has changed. When I was with the county, it was still one-on-one meetings with department heads. At that point, then, the county treasurer and county manager will have some small group meetings with county council members to go over the budget and the questions that they may have on the budget. Yes.
Okay. Because the city actually does it from the standpoint of having everybody... Everybody's in the room, and everybody has to hear what everybody else wants, you know, what every department head wants. And I... From some aspects, I think that gives you a better feel, doesn't it, as to what everybody... And then when you don't get something, you can understand why.
Absolutely. I will agree with you. And one of the things that I did go back to Chairman Lane and suggest is that I knew I had questions from my initial small group meeting, and I felt like I wanted to hear what other council members' questions were as well. And we did have discussion about having a budget workshop that was open to the public, and we did follow up with that. Maybe a couple of weeks later, we did get one of those on the public meeting agenda, and we had a very good session.
Do you happen to know if that was recorded in any way? Because I couldn't find that anywhere.
It was not a video recording, but I believe since it was a public meeting, that there was an audio recording. I think that I would have to clarify that for sure, but I believe that there would be an audio recording that should be available since it was a public meeting.
Okay. So maybe check with Susan on that?
Yes.
Susan?
The clerk to council, yes.
Right. Okay. Well, that would be something that I think could be interesting. You know, in fact, in fact, I have a clip here where you voiced some objections to what y'all were doing. Let's go ahead and play that, and maybe that will give everybody a little bit of sense because, you know, a lot of people, all those meetings are out there. It's great. But they can be rather long, right? And what I did was I went back through and pulled some of the clips that I felt might give us some talking points. So let's play this. I'll turn this up so you can hear it.
Ms. Miller?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank again the treasurer for pulling all these things together, just in letting the public know. We had small group meetings. I requested that we have a budget workshop, which we did, but it was open to the public last Tuesday. A lot of questions were vetted and answered, so thank you for doing that. And I expressed at that meeting, and I will reiterate at this meeting, that in my questions that were posed, that we do pull the internal equity forward to the first quarter of this fiscal year. I do not agree with adding an assistant county manager at this time. I think there's a lot of justification that needs to be looked at, and there were three reasons given: succession planning, execution of strategic plan, and the number of direct reports, which I think all need to be vetted before we include anything in the budget for this year. And there were some other issues that I've discussed as well. There were several questions that we've had. Those are my nine, two ones that I do want to publicly note. You know, I've asked before about why we don't have elected officials included in the annual merit. Why do they have to wait four years? So I still don't have a real good feel for hiring six additional firemen in this plan, and I just want to make that known. I think there's been some more conversation about that. I'd like to see where that conversation has landed before we proceed. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Certainly, you know, we have two more weeks before third reading and final vote on this budget, and we will continue to vet a number of different topics as we go forward.
Well, now Kathy, you know, I think you made some good points there, but I don't understand what you were saying about how elected officials have to wait four years, something about their pay. I don't understand that.
So I had probably several, you know, things that I understand, Anna, that none of us will get 100% of what we want.
Right.
But, you know, the ones you feel strongly about, you do want to give your kind of voice. And I want law enforcement in Greenwood County to know that, you know, I am 100% a law enforcement fan. I want them at my door, you know, if something happens. So my... I learned this, probably one of the first things when I came on in January or so was that one of the elected officials had to make a request to county council for them to go back and look at a retroactive merit or raise, basically. So my eyebrow shot up on that one. I was really surprised to know that they're not included in the annual increase that's going about. But what happens is that the county will then, once it's requested by the elected official, they will go back and see what raise was given to the county employees over that last four years. So this, for example, say one year it might have been 1.5%, and one year maybe it was 2%. One year there was nothing, so now we're up to 3.5%. And then maybe another half, I don't know. So we'll just do the math simple. So maybe there's a total of 4% over that four-year period of time. Then, those elected officials will get their increase now, four years later, instead of getting a little bit every year along like the employees did. And I don't know why we couldn't go ahead and put that in the budgeting process instead of really almost asking them to ask us for a raise and not... I don't think there's a legal reason for it. If I'm wrong, somebody can correct me on that, but that's just one of those small things that I'm trying to be a good partner with all of our agencies.
Absolutely. Mark, do you understand that? Have you ever been involved in that or anything in any way?
No, don't... I know exactly what Kathy's talking about, and I think your point was the delay that it done, you know? You're approved for an increase, and then you see it basically four years later is kind of the point you were making, is that, you know...
Well, is that way, so maybe you'll run again?
Right.
We gave you a raise, don't you want to run again?
So I think that was the gist of it, is the procedural process. And again, I don't think there's any statutory...
Yeah, I'm not aware of that one.
...that it has to be done, but was just questioning, noting the way it was done. I think you were just saying, what meaneth this?
Yeah. Why do we have this process in place? And again, that goes back to my analytical mind about processing. I was an industrial engineer, it was my first job out of school, so I'm about process improvement and, you know, making things more efficient.
Efficient, efficient, yes. And I think that it's important when you're trying to do this, to make sure that things are efficient and fair, and fair. So when you have this process, basically, are y'all just presented this budget and say, this is the budget we'd like you all to vote on? Is that how this comes together, basically?
So after we had... We did have the budget workshop. Now, that was after first reading, though, if I remember correctly. So we had first reading, title only, and basically, we knew we had some time coming to vet more of our questions. So we did have a budget workshop a little bit later that was open to the public. So that's the first take on it, per se. We really didn't vote on anything at the budget workshop. We did have a quorum that day.
No.
So then we come up on second reading.
Which was June 3rd.
Right. And that's where some of the, I think, audio that you're playing surfaced. So we had all had questions that... Or suggested changes that we would like to have seen, but the version that was presented back on second reading was still the original version, yes.
Okay. So at that point, the part about whether we would go forward with an assistant manager was still in there, also when the equity would come through. And I actually have what I thought was a great piece that Mark said at the meeting, and I'd like to play that for you because I think you cover a lot of aspects of it. You cover everything from... It wasn't just the fire station that asked for people. There were other people that had asked for help. So let's listen to this one real quick here. Whoops.
This is Jared.
Yes, sir. Mr. Allison.
If I may. Let me say, first of all, thanks to Stephanie and her staff and Toby and his staff for putting this budget together. I know it's a tough order to try to meet all the needs of all the departments, and I appreciate their hard work. I have a lot of concerns, and I'll just tell you what those concerns are. The proposed budget, first of all, let me say, I totally agree with the equity money. We had already made that commitment to those folks. We owe that money, and we need to pay that money as soon as we can in the July budget. Totally agree, and I will support Mr. Templeton's motion on that. However, I do not support adding almost or over a half a million dollars to our annual budget in new hires and salary. I am a member of council, but higher than that, I am a taxpayer in Greenwood County. And I have concerns of adding another over half a million dollars in salaries. I know five of those hires, one, two, three, four, six of those hires are for our fire system. I have supported our fire system from when we first, when I came on council 12 years ago. I have seen it come a long way, and I'm proud of the service that Greenwood County offers to our citizens through our fire service. So I'm not knocking the fire service, but what a lot of folks don't realize is that there are other two entities of emergency services that also serve you. That's EMS, and that's our sheriff's office, our law enforcement agencies. And a lot of times in these situations, in these emergencies, fire service is not the only one there. A lot of times, law enforcement arrives there, they serve there. Law enforcement in our budget had a request for one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five, six employees to be added to the sheriff's office. We said no to all six of those. EMS asked for a new position. We said no to that. And I understand why we say no, is because there's just not enough money in our budget to add all of these positions. But I don't understand why we take one entity and we favor it a little bit over the others. I know we had a five-year plan, and we were going to add to our fire service, and I want to see us do that. Again, I'm not anti-fire service. We got a great service. We came through a catastrophic hurricane in this last year's budget, and I'll tell you, they all performed great. I mean, the work that these volunteer fire departments and our EMS and the sheriff's office and law enforcement done, it was catastrophic. I've been here all my life, I've never seen anything like that. I think they performed great, and I am just not willing to add a half a million dollars to the taxpayers' budget. And I will also tell you that we said we haven't raised taxes. I've been told that it's likely, if we bring this into our budget this year, we will have to raise taxes next year. They will... It's very probable there will be a tax increase in our next year's budget. I just want the public to be aware of that. And I am the public. I am one of the public, and I pay taxes. Again, my higher colleague is a citizen in my position as a member of council, and I think I pay enough taxes already. That's just the way I feel about it. And I look at it from a taxpayer's perspective also. So I'd like for... I just don't think it's a good time to be... Anna, we don't know what next year brings. There's a lot of uncertainty in the world, wars and things that don't... How it's going to affect us and our country. I just don't think we need to add to our debt right now when we don't know, you know, what's coming ahead of us.
Well, I gotta say this. I gotta say this. You are the taxpayer's friend. We were looking for a friend, we got one in Mark Allison. That's what I think, and next time you run, taxpayer's friend there. You know, I think that is so true. Now, that half a million you were talking about, is that if we put everybody that had asked for help, or was that just one department?
No, that would be just the fire department and then the new assistant county manager. That would be six positions in the fire service, full-time position, and then the assistant county manager in there. And there was a few other human resource, some temp service and things there. I think the paralegal was in last year's...
It was actually in last year's budget. It just has not been hired yet.
Has not been hired.
Okay, I see.
But as I stated earlier, I do appreciate our staff. And as Kathy said earlier, the way it works is all the entities come to the staff, the county manager, the treasurer, and the staff, and they present what their needs are for the next, for that budget, coming up budget year. And then the staff makes a recommendation to us as to what they recommend we do. And we've done this for years. That's the way the process works, and I'm fine with that process. But this year, when it came to us, I thought, I had several concerns, is we're in a different year. There's a lot of changes in the world. There's a lot of changes in Greenwood. We have development going on in our community like we've never seen. Multi-million dollar, hundreds of million dollars development out towards Stony Point and Old Eight and that area, and then all these new subdivisions coming in. And, you know, I know that they're going to create tax revenue, but what kind of cost comes with that? You know, you take your landfills, your fire service, your sheriff's office, your EMS service. So I don't think anybody right now can tell us how that's going to end up.
Nobody has a crystal ball.
Nobody has a crystal ball.
Can I add to this? Because we've had discussion too, you know, when we came on, I came on in January, and we talked about the need for, to your point, a strategic plan. What is the five-year plan, the 10-year plan for Greenwood? What are all of our intergovernmental partners? Where are we working with them to talk about infrastructure needs, about the capital projects that we're going to need? How many new fire trucks are we going to need? The landfill, all this kind... We need to know what our plan is on revenue projections and the impact that all these houses are going to have on infrastructure requirements and everything else. We need to know those kind of numbers before we can really, I think, start having a robust budget that's going to support, not just this year, but for the next several years.
Well, that's how you keep yourself out of trouble, right?
Yes, yes. And build funds as funds are needed, and we have a lot of funds out there. We can talk about that in a few minutes as well.
Well, I think that you both make very good, very good points here, but somebody just sent in a question here. It says, I'll just read it as it is. Are you ready? Okay. This is our own public, this is our own public hearing right here on WCRS. Why do we need an county assistant manager but no additional public safety positions? And also, not hiring any more sheriff's department, it says, is insane.
Okay. I'll take part of it, okay? We're a great tag team over here. We need to bring back the wrestling over at the old civic center, right? So we can tag team in. My concern, Anna, on the front end, and I'm one of those people at the open budget meeting that we had, the budget workshop, came with probably about 20 questions ready. The top one, top concern was around the internal equity and making sure that if we had promised that adjustment, that we were going to do it on the front end of the budget and not in the second half.
Absolutely, right.
So that was number one. And the question came up, well, how are we going to pay for it? And I said, well, let's just work through this staffing plan. So the next thing on the agenda or the question...
I don't think that, you know, I'm sorry, I don't even think that should have been a question. How are we going to pay for it? You knew that that was something you obligated, and this is how you got everybody to go along with it last year.
So within the budget that was presented...
Sorry, I just had to get in there.
...it was going to be in a January timeframe. So we go right into the staffing plan. So, you know, one of the things, and Mark has already talked about, you know, the, what was approved by the staff and presented to council was an assistant county manager, which coincidentally would be the exact amount of money as paying for a, you know, a six-month earlier on the equity adjustment. So, and in the open budget meeting, I expressed those concerns for the three reasons that were given as justification. One was succession planning, and I think we even had some conversation about, you know, the city having a couple of assistant city managers. But in my thought, and what I've seen again in my past, is that you can bring people in and groom, but there's no guarantee they're going to stay and wait on the current county manager to, you know, something to happen.
Well, we can just look at the city government because they just lost their...
Both of them.
They've lost both of their assistant managers.
So I'd rather see this focused on some internal grooming, if you will, of people who are already, you know, proven they're here, they're long-term, that kind of thing. The second one was on supporting the strategic plan, which we don't have yet. We are going to be creating one in this next year.
Well, that's a process. That's a big process.
It is, but we're going to be facilitating, having facilitation with a contractor to come in, somebody who's skilled in this kind of thing, to help us create that plan. So we really don't maybe have the need for somebody to execute it because we don't have it yet. And then the third reason was around really having a very, a lot of direct reports for the county manager. I think there's maybe 17 direct reports. I may have like 16, 17.
Right.
Which I remember sitting around the table, huge table. And I could not agree more that that is too many direct reports. So the conversation we had at the budget meeting was around, let's explore reorganizing the way we're laid out, to have more of a senior staff of maybe seven or eight people, and take some of those other ones and maybe make it more of a vertical org chart instead of so horizontal. So let's do that before we think about adding an assistant...
A hundred and sixty-some-a-thousand-dollar position.
Right, right. So that answers the first part of that question. And I think Mr. Allison has addressed somewhat that the justifications, and when we actually, the number three or so in the list when we're going through the budget workshop was, let's look at all of the requested positions, the justification for approval or denial, and let's just talk about each one of those. And we had that discussion at that meeting.
Did you have input from the department heads with this when you had this budget meeting? For example, was the sheriff or his right-hand person there to discuss why they needed six, Mark?
Yes. We... All of them have the opportunity at a public hearing.
But when you had this budget, this open budget thing...
Right, this budget meeting, the sheriff came to it, and the sheriff and the different departments present their request to the staff, and then the staff presents it to us, accept it or deny it. But one of the problems is, I'm just, you know, going to tell you how I feel about it, is that the fire folks, the volunteer chiefs and all came before us. And let me say, to start with, I respect them. They are, they are an asset to the people of Greenwood County, and I have no intentions of, you know, trying to go to war with them. I think they sincerely feel they need six more people to do what they need to do.
Okay.
But on the other hand, the sheriff feels like he needs his people just as much. But you put the sheriff in a real uncomfortable situation when you want him to come up before council and look at the fire people who they work hand-in-hand with on a daily basis and say, don't give them their six people. Give me my five or six people.
Well, I'm about three and three.
Yeah, or three and three. So he's in a situation to where he don't want to create any kind of, you know, situation between him and the fire service because it is essential that these agencies work hand-in-hand, and they do work very well together. So he's kind of in... work hand in hand and they do work very well together. So he's kind of in a situation, but he has talked to me personally and he feels, he needs these people just as much as the fire system feels like the fire chiefs need their people. And our position is, we've got to decide, you know, and, and, and like you're saying, if you're willing to add taxpayer money to the budget, that's going to require pretty sure tax increase, then give them three and give them three. But again, my position is, we came through a catastrophic event. We didn't have any major failures. Did you or did anybody see that, man, it just, it all fell apart? We need, we got, you know, I, I, I don't see the immediate urgency to add half a million dollars to the county budget.
So you're saying six people adds half a million dollars? Or what, what is the number roughly?
It was 330, oh, hang on, hang on, hang on.
The fire was 223,008.74 was, well, with benefits and everything, it's 373,000. And then, and then you add the assistant county manager was 167.
Okay, well, we're saying that we really need an assistant county manager. But that's where the 600.
That's my point. And, and the same thing with the assistant county manager. I, I know Toby Chapel works long days and I'm not discrediting his, you know, his, his work ethic or how hard he works. And he would probably like an assistant and so would I in my business. But.
I work solo, just for the record.
So, but is this the time? Is, is, is this the year with so much uncertainty, two world, two wars going on in the world right now? And I'm telling you, that can affect us right here.
Absolutely.
At home. And, and then, like I say, the growth of the town, how, what is, what kind of demands is it going to put on the county to, to abstain all of this new growth? I know we think, we say we're going to, you know, create tax revenues and we will, but nobody, as you said, Ann, can look into that crystal ball and say, at the end, it's going to be a plus. No, it may be a negative. And I've always been the one, this is my position and I'm one vote, one member, is when you need more money in, in my budget, and I, I run a, a private-owned business that's much smaller than this here, and I don't have the budget experience that this lady has. But it's real simple. It's money in and it's money out, whether it's 500 million or 5,000. It's, it's, it all works.
If you don't have it, you don't have it.
That's exactly right. And what I do in my business is I go find other places within the existing budget to make up what we need. If we need something, we got to have this over here. Law enforcement and fire, we got to have it. Then let's look and see if maybe over in these areas, we don't always, government has the tendency just to go, let's just go find more money from the taxpayer. And, and we know that on every level of government. That's how it works. We don't ever look backwards and say, you know, nobody ever brings a budget that says, we're, we're not raising the budget. We're hiring six more firefighters. But over here, this next year, we're cutting here, we're going to cut there and we're going to cut here. That's how I have to do my budget.
Right.
And that's the way I would like to see us do the taxpayer's budget.
Question, okay. Well, here's a good question then. Has there been a Doge effect at Greenwood County? A cost-cutting Doge effect at, at Greenwood County? Have, have y'all sent them back to look for cuts to, to do any of these things? Just out of curiosity, Kathy?
Well, and I'll, let me, let me come back to that question. I want to follow up. One thing that Mark just commented on about the sheriff and that fire and the EMS and even the magistrate was asking for help because of, you know, the caseloads there. The justification given, of course, is growth in industry and growth in housing and whatnot, increasing calls. The sheriff has the same increase.
Absolutely.
So it's, it's hard for me to wrap my head around, how do we make a distinction? So the second part of that is that I know that we have officially asked that next year, we be a part of the budget process on the front end with the elected and the appointed officials to hear their requests on the front end and make sure we understand the need and that it passes in the first round of the budgets and we're not still talking about it in the third round of the budgets.
Sure. That makes sense. Now, has there been any type of Doge effect here in Greenwood, Greenwood County?
I think that certainly the county manager and treasurer do a great job with looking for those opportunities. Then it's the responsibility, if you will, for council to then take the deep dive into the budget that is presented. And that's just me, of course. And I just want to give kind of a feel for what the budget is in case some of your listeners don't know the magnitude. So the general fund that we speak a lot about has 28 departments in it. And they range from administration, auditor, child support, clerk of court, coroner. I mean, I can go on and on, detention, sheriff's office, HRT.
So money goes in from all these things into the general fund?
That's the general fund. That is a $30 million budget. Okay?
That is a $30 million budget or fund? How much money is?
That's, that's the budget for the year's 30 million. So the, the general, just general fund. That's not the fund balance. That's the budget for that, that, that group in general, the operating cost. There are 19 other funds that total 25 million more dollars that we also are responsible for.
So now we're up to talking about 55 million. Yes.
So this budget packet that I have in front of me gives us a list of all those things. Now, clearly, we don't have the time and we shouldn't go through and look at every single line item. That's not our job per se, but it is our job to look at it overall for reasonableness and go through and question very quickly, well, why is this line going from, you know, 300,000 up to 600,000?
Sure.
Those get my attention. And that's the kind of questions that I pose in my small group and then in the budget session that we had. So I think to some degree, the county does a good job with looking for those opportunities. But we also, in my opinion, by reading the statute, is that we not only, we should be reviewing it and approving it. And I owe that to my constituents, which I consider everybody in Greenwood County, that I am looking out for that as well.
Absolutely. Now, do you have any idea, somebody just asked this question. What will the surplus be at the end of this year? At the end of, going into the end of June? Do you have any, is there?
On the general fund?
I guess on the general fund.
I know that based on conversation we had at the last council meeting, where we were going to be using some funds in the general fund to help expedite.
That's the, the building of the Park Plaza.
Plaza renovation. And that when the capital project sales tax money comes in, and the question that I posed was, when will that be refunded to the general fund? It would come back in 2028. So we were all aware that we're basically, we have a hefty fund balance in the general fund. I don't want anybody to think we don't. It's, it's above what the, the, the standards require us to do. So it's a
Isn't there a minimum, something like 35%?
35%. And it's, you know, way above that, way above that. So I don't have the exact number for you to talk about those things.
And Ann, let me say, you, you asked about the Doge. We, we, I've said this privately and I'll say it publicly. We probably have one of the, the leanest counties in the state of South Carolina. I, we do not throw money away. And Toby and his staff have always, you know, maintained a lean. When I go to the conferences with some of these other counties and I see the shape they're in and the money they spend, if I'm not mistaken, I know it was at one time, Greenwood County was, out of 46 counties in the state of South Carolina, we're the only debt-free county in the state of South Carolina, out of 46. So I applaud the county for their leanness. But it's just like me, when, when my budget, I need more money in my budget. And the first thing I say is, I don't know what I'm going to do because I'm not spending any extra money. But then if I really get down to it, you know, there's no, for me to sit here and tell you that there's nowhere Greenwood County could cut a dime of money, I don't believe that because we would be the only county on earth if, if that was the case.
I just threw that out there.
Right, exactly.
You're looking at 600,000 dollars per city.
But you make a good point. What I would like for, to see us do as a council and as a county, is to maybe have that option. When they give me a budget, they say, now, we can either raise taxpayers' taxes next year to offset this necessity, which again, my problem is I don't feel like it is.
Right.
But if it was, if it was a half a million dollar, here's an option. If you don't want to raise taxes next year, we can go over here and we can cut here and here and here and here and make up this deficit.
Well, I think that's it.
And then that gives us an option as members of council to say, maybe we need to do that. Or maybe, maybe this needs to be done now. Again, bottom line with me as a taxpayer is, I, I don't see this in this uncertain time as a necessity.
Do you think that part of the need that they're feeling is because of the houses that are being built out at the lake and all these developments? Do you think? And is that something that could be put off for a year, shall we say, to see how our, how are the economy and everything fares? And how much is actually built in Greenwood? You know, we hear a lot of talk about everything that's building, 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 and a lot of lands, and a lot of lands been cleared.
But there's still a lot to be built, as, as you're saying. It's not there yet. And it could be a couple of years. And that's my point. It may be needed, but is it needed right now? And, and one thing I, I can tell you about my weight that I need to lose, it didn't happen overnight. We're a county that's in good physical, financial shape. But you don't get out of that overnight. It's a gradual thing over years. And then, you know, we raise taxes for this and then next year there is a true deficit. Then we've got to make that up also. So I just, I just think we need to set back right now and not increase our budget at all this year and, and wait a year. I don't see anything urgent. And again, Kathy's correct. They, we, maybe I haven't had the right conversations with the right people to know that, you know? Maybe, maybe it is an urgency here that I have not seen. But for me to choose six firefighters over six police officers or sheriff deputies, I have not been given or don't feel comfortable enough with the information I've been given to make that decision.
I will say, I will say, one of the things in that meeting, when you brought up, and I don't think I got that clip, but you brought up when you were talking to Paul Bagnoli and the conversation was about needing the six, and you made the comment, something to the effect, well, I'm sure you're going to need yada, 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 backpack, or whatever it was, fire packs. And he said, yes, we will.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that.
And part of that, Ann, as well, was the, and very clearly stated that we are not opposed. We need more information to substantiate why you need it versus somebody else. So the sheriff's department's had an 18% increase in their calls from 2022 to 2024. So what kind of volume are we seeing? Show us that so that we can be supportive of it or not. And, you know, to go back when somebody asked us, well, you approved a budget, just so and so, that we need to be able to articulate that story back to them and the need for it.
To me, and I mean, this is just me personally speaking, I think, I hate to say it because I'll probably get in trouble, but I'll do it anyways because I'm brave. I'm Ann Eller, is that I think it's ridiculous to use big fire trucks to go get somebody that's fallen up. I mean, I just wonder if there isn't a way that it wouldn't be more better to buy a couple of well-equipped pickup trucks and, and handle it that way. It just seems like that has to be a huge cost every time you move those fire trucks.
Well, and I'm data-driven, so I've just flipped over to a justification page. And it says that the fire districts respond to approximately 3,000 calls per year, 65% of those being medical. So that was one of the questions that we ask in our open budget workshop. So if, do you need more firemen or do you need more EMS workers? And why are the trucks? Because I'm trying to learn. I don't know that much about how this operation is and who responds to what. I believe the sheriff's department is probably even on scene quicker than anybody. And then the fire trucks are rolling. So do we need EMS to be quicker on the scene than the fire people? I'm just trying to understand that when we see those kind of numbers as justification.
Somebody had asked a question since we're talking about the fire here. Somebody, how many fire stations do we have in the county and how many staff are already at each station?
That's a great question. I, I would be afraid to tell you how many stations because we've built new stations recently. My understanding, not counting the volunteers, and, and again, forgive me if this is not correct, these are probably round numbers. We have 12 full-time firemen.
I think that's what was said at the meeting.
At the meeting. 12 full-time firemen. But I also understand we have 20 or 25 part-time firemen who are, we, we have those that come in and work periodically. And, and then our volunteers. And again, I'm, it's way above my pay grade to know whether or not that's adequate for a county our size.
But you don't know how many fire stations we've ended up with now. Because you're right, we've built several.
Yeah, we've got them and, and I know that.
And they all have trucks in them too. So there is a big expense right there.
And I think, I think some of our full-time and part-time and volunteers, I think they rotate, if I understand, kind of rotate from one to the other and kind of, I think they've done a great job. Steve Holmes has done a great job of strategically putting people at these because I, I know their response time. And, you know, there are situations in areas in Greenwood County that are very rural. Another thing is, is water supply. You know, that's what you don't have out in the rural areas.
Exactly.
You can have, you can have 15 firemen there, but if they don't have any water to put on the fire, then, you know, it don't do any good. So there's challenges. I do not believe we could ever afford to offer the same service to all 70,000 residents of, approximately 70,000 residents Greenwood County. I don't think it's, I know it's not sustainable financially. And as a taxpayer, I understand that, that I choose to live rural and there's some services.
The comment was, I live on 50 acres and that's what I like it.
That's, that's right. That's what I like.
And when it comes to the building, what, what are you on in 96? The?
Architectural Review Board. Yes. I'm the only vote that has to have.
I like it.
But, and, and, you know, I'm fine with the fire service because everything, you know, CPW, for instance, that's basically a government entity. It's, has three elected commissioners and it's, it's so, so I could say the same thing. I could say, the man five, 10 miles up the road that's in the county of Greenwood has city water. I want city water. I don't care that it costs 12 million dollars to run a water line down here to my house. I live in Greenwood County just like he does and I should be able to get the same service he does. It's not realistic and it's not going to happen.
Right.
And, 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 and I think that's the way it is with our fire service. We will do the best we can with a fire service, you know, strategically, operating and, 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 and I think we've done a great job at it. And, and I don't care, I have seen houses burned to the ground right beside a fire hydrant. It's just according to, you know, what's fueling it, how hot it is. And I'm not an expert on fire. I'm not trying to pretend I am. But, you know, I think we've done a great job with what we have and they may be a point to where we need to add some more full-time firemen.
But one of those things, now, let, let's just discuss, I hope y'all can stay a few extra minutes.
Sure.
Okay. The, a fire, you pay a fire fee on your taxes. That is separate from.
It's a separate line and those funds go into the fire fund.
Fire fund?
Yes.
Now, what does that actually go to? As opposed to what we're talking about with making it part of the, the budget here?
It goes to fund the fire service. That's what they do with it. It is a fund. And a, a lot of people want to say, that's not raising taxes when you raise a fire fee.
Oh, yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It's, at the bottom line on the tax bill, it goes up. I don't care whether it's a fee or not. And one concern I have with that is it affects our low-income seniors.
Uh- Adversely.
Adversely because they get a twenty-five percent or some percentage off as a homestead on their taxes.
Right.
But that fee, if it goes up twenty-five, fifty dollars, seventy-five dollars, they don't get that percentage.
You don't get a break on that.
Right. So it looks like to me, and that's what's funding it, and we need that fee. I'm not knocking the fee or saying we need to do away with it. It is what's generating the capital for us to run our fire service.
Designated for the fire support.
For the fire support.
I pulled it up just for information. So the Fire Operations Fund is fund number two fifteen, I believe, on the, the accounting software. Uh, so the proposed budget is a little over three million dollar, uh, revenue coming in from the fire fees and whatnot. Uh, uniform service charges and whatnot, so about three million dollars. And then the expense, uh, which included some capital expenditures was four million. Okay, so do the math.
That's a negatory, one million, yes.
So you're taking money out of the fire fund balance that's there. That had a positive balance from a prior year, a prior year, a prior year. Because you know you've got some outlays coming. So you will be taking a million dollars out of that fire fund, out of the balance of that fire. So that fire fund is not unlimited. Uh, and I know that that's the point that, um, Mr. Allison was making earlier about the impact, um, of, of these decisions. And I've, I've got some numbers here. If I did my math correctly, and, you know, Ms. Dorn, please forgive me if I, I didn't do this correctly. So at the twenty-twenty-four audited financials, the fund balance in the fire fund was two and a half million dollars.
Okay.
We're projecting that we're probably going to be using in twenty-twenty-five about eight-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand coming out of that. Maybe it's some transfers or some equipment, I don't know. But, so now we're down to one point six. The twenty-twenty-six budget we just talked about is another million coming out of the fund. So now we're down to about six hundred thousand in the fire fund.
But there'll be more monies coming in with, with the taxes, yes.
But if you're borrowing a mil, not borrow, if you're reducing it by a million to cover this year's budget, that means you didn't collect enough revenue to, to cover it. Which means next year, what he's mentioned earlier is the potential that the fire fee would have to increase to cover the incremental expenses. And that's the consideration.
That, that's a problem. Well, that kind of goes to a question that somebody has asked here. Do you know, either of you know, uh, how, let's do, let's see. We want to know how positive they end up of at the end of this year, less the expenses they amended throughout the year. So how much over the budget or under budget did you end up for this year? Do you know that? I mean, you're coming right up on the end of it, so you should have information pretty close.
I can tell you that typically there is a surplus at the end of each year.
A dollar?
And there's a lot of things that can affect that.
Right.
Uh, one thing is hire, you know, you've got five positions that, that someone has left within the whole county operations. We've lost five employees. Well, if, if they are, we have budgeted to pay those five people or ten or every how many it is. And then if you don't hire somebody because you couldn't find the most qualified person or they done some restructuring in positions.
Sure.
Then that's a surplus. So that's where a lot of the surplus I see comes from is, is from-
That's kind of like leaving the money, uh, in there for the, um, Assistant County Manager because, quote, you may need some of these funds. And I believe that was part of an amendment that y'all did, that the funding, I don't think the final decision has been made. But that was part of what, in fact, that was a question you had, Kathy.
Yes, I wanted to be very clear on what the motion for the amendment was. I think that, um, Councilman, uh, Templeton, uh, made that motion. And it was to, um, bring forward the internal equity adjustment into, you know, the first part of the year. Absolutely. That was going to cost us a hundred and sixty-four thousand more dollars than what the original budget. Um, and then the, um, the question and clarity that I wanted was the Assistant County Manager position. So it was almost to delay the Assistant County Manager position. So my question was, are we saying we're still going to have one? Or are we saying we don't need one at all? Because it was to delay the county manager originally until January. So really just flipping the two expenses, one over the other one. Um, and then I believe Chairman Lane actually came back in response to my question and said that based on what we were proposing with organizational changes, that, that we were going to leave money in the budget to fund those organizational changes in case some of the other department heads assumed additional responsibility that we could compensate them.
But it definitely shouldn't be a hundred and sixty-some-odd thousand dollars.
So, um, that was the clarity that I heard.
I, I heard it too, yeah.
So that was not to fund, that would be some, a discussion for a later day. I wanted to make sure we were not in our motion that when we voted, that, yeah, I cannot vote against moving the internal equity forward. No, I'm for it, exactly. But when you combine a motion like that, it's a little confusing. I would rather see us have individual motion. I want to move the internal equity forward, all in favor, I, you know, I want to, um, eliminate the county manager position, Assistant County Manager position. Uh, but we didn't, we bundled it. So I'm very cautious of bundling motions that we make sure we know what we're voting on.
Now, um, the two of you voted against, you voted for the amendment, I believe, but against the budget. Am I correct on that?
That's right.
There was a five to two and you, and you all voted against it. Uh, Mark, why did you vote against the budget?
Um, first of all, let me say, you're absolutely right. I, the, the money we owe, what it was, is we had a, uh, study done and we seen that our pay scale was lower in some areas of operations. So we agreed to raise them and do it over a period of time. Well, we felt like that, the, the budget said that they would get that in January. Well, we felt like if we're passing this budget, they need to get it in July next month. So I was, that was one of the things that I was very strong, felt like we needed.
Top of our list.
Top of the list needed to be done. Again-
But why did you vote against the budget in the end?
I voted against the-
In the end?
In the end, I voted against the budget because it still adds hundreds of thousands of dollars of more expenditures to, to the operation of county government. And, uh, I respect every member of council. I am, uh, friends with them and we all have different opinions. But my opinion is, is that again, in this environment we're in right now, why can't we reevaluate this next year? Do not increase any costs to our county operations. Keep it level from last year, no increases, which there's already increases because insurance has gone up, workers' comp has gone up. So there's some mandatory stuff that you have no choice.
Right.
But keep it to the absolute minimum this year. And then next year, as Kathy said, let's really get down and get these people in and see, uh, you know, what we have to have. But I am opposed to the budget because I am not going to support additional expenditures to the budget that will require most likely tax increases next year to pay for it. That's my position.
Okay. And Kathy, what about you? You voted against the budget in the last one.
I do as well, Anne, and similar but slightly different reason, um, than Mr. Allison is that I still wanted more explanation and justification. And I also would like to see, you know, more conversation around those other emergency services that ask for staffing. Um, and if one's justified, then they all should be. I don't understand that. And, um, I, that, that's really the reason I said, no, I cannot vote on something that I, in my mind, have to not put my head around yet.
Right.
So that I can articulate to the citizens about, you know, this coming down the pipeline.
And, um, so you have one more budget meeting that's coming up this Tuesday, Tuesday evening. You're supposed to vote on the budget then. Do you think, do you think that there's going to be enough, uh, changes made to it that will allow you or are you going to have enough information to understand? Mark, what do you think? A five to two, you're still going to be defeated. You're still going to be defeated if it's still five to two. But, but, you know, they're standing up, right? Standing up for a position I feel is important.
Right. Uh, I, a, as of right now, again, if, if they, and, and I understand they may be changing a few things.
Some, some adjustments that have been filed, yes.
Some adjustment, I think the Magistrates Office has now possibly been given another position or some, some, some changes, some minor adjustments.
Some movements into-
Movements in, in money, but again-
You're going to do away with that paralegal that you've never been able to hire? Is that, there's some money right there, right? Yeah.
That's another one of those questions, you know.
But I, uh, again, I, I, you're fine. I just don't, I'm just not in a position to support spending that we know will require or most likely will require a tax increase next year. And we may be faced with a tax increase next year that has not, that if we didn't hire anybody. And that's my concern.
Right.
You know, what, what does the future hold? Just a lot of uncertainty. And, uh, I, I would, I would have liked to have seen no, no extra expenditures. Let's just maintain what we have now. Uh, I think, uh, you, you know, that we can operate like that. If there's an emergency situation with the sheriff and he's got to have something, then you have to, that's core government, okay?
Right.
Law enforcement.
There are core functions of government.
There are core functions. But there's a lot of things that's not core function that you can look at sometimes and adjust. And that's kind of my position. I would have liked to seen some of the non-core things looked at to see if we couldn't possibly not had to increase our cost of operations in any of our services this year. It's, it's, it's a different day right now, in my opinion. And, 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 you know, there's, there's a lot of uncertainties everywhere right now. And, and that's the position that I have. And if they, which I know they're not, but if they brought me a, a budget or brought before us a budget and said, guess what? We're adding no more expenditures to the, uh, to the debt this year.
No new staff, yeah.
Yeah, no, no new staff that's going to create more, more costs to the taxpayers, then I would raise my hand and I would support it. But that's probably the only thing that would do it for me to support it. And again, I've been on the short end of the stick votes many times, so I'm fine with it and-
Well, you are short, so.
Yeah. I will, uh, you know-
You'll continue to stay on the short stick.
I, I'll just, you know, I, that's my position and I respect every, every member's opinion. They all have opinions. And if we all had the same opinion, y'all wouldn't need nobody but me. As the count could be, you could, they could have let one council member. But that's why you have seven people to get seven different opinions and seven views, and they're going to be different. And that's the way democracy works.
Absolutely. Kathy, what about you? Where would, that's Mark Allison, by the way. He's one of our councilmen here today with us. Kathy Miller, what do you feel about the budget? Where will you be, do you think, on Tuesday?
I am still waiting to get, and I actually have a, a meeting set tomorrow with, um, uh, Fire Chief Steve Holmes tomorrow to walk through, uh, these questions. I've had a conversation with the sheriff, um, about his as well. I'd like to see some kind of a, if, if you're going to justify one, then, you know, if it's a true need, then I'm all in to say, well, they, if they both need, then we need to, you know, find it somewhere to do that. Um, because we've got, as you said, core function, we've got to be able to provide it. You've got to show me need and not won't, and I think that's important. But I'm really more of a hardliner than saying, I, I really don't think we, um, should be funding an Assistant County Manager position. Um, I want to make sure that that's clear, that that is not what's in the current version of the budget.
Are you saying that there's not that money left in there for it? Is that what you're saying, Kathy Miller?
There's money in there. Um, we need to clarify, is it for a reorganization for other staff members? Or is it still holding on to a position that I don't agree with? Yes.
Right. So that is, uh, kind of where you're at. You know, we just had a, uh, compliment come in here and actually it's kind of addressed to me. So it says, thank you for getting people on and getting some answers and getting to the point. So this has been a very good meeting here today and I really appreciate y'all coming on. I know we didn't, um, I, I know we didn't get all the answers maybe we all would like to get. But we do understand that you are, you guys are, I'm going to use the phrase, you're on it. You're asking the questions and you're doing what's necessary to make sure that the people of Greenwood County are getting the best deal they can for their hard-earned dollars. And it is hard-earned dollars.
And, and I want to point out too, Anne, you know, my email address is cmillar@greenwoodsc.gov. So anybody that wants to, you know, and we all have the same convention, right? Mallison@greenwoodsc.gov. So, um, I'm very good at responding. I watched my box beat like blowing up tomorrow, but-
There'll be people getting you on the street, Kathy. By the way, where are you going to lunch tomorrow? Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, I was just, I just, and I also want to say that this has been really good. I was hopeful that originally we were going to be able to get the, um, fire people on here to talk about their issues. But unfortunately, they couldn't work it out to have somebody here. Um, and I also want to tell all those that are listening that next Thursday, the nineteenth, we are going to have our county manager here, Toby Chapel, and we are going to have, uh, Chairman Theo Lane will be with us. And so, uh, we'll see if y'all can, now, what happens if you don't come to a conclusion on the budget? Just, you know, what if?
It'll be voted, it's going to be voted.
It's got to be voted, so.
Right.
Takes four votes, basically seven members of four-vote majority will pass it.
Will pass it, okay. So what should people do? If you're concerned about the budget, you should call your council people. You should, you should email them, you should get in touch with them. This is where you have a voice and this is why I do these things on the radio and on Facebook Live so that you can help make good decisions. I want to thank both of you so much for coming out here today. This has really been a great conversation. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
All right. That's going to do it for us right here on WCRS Facebook Live. Thank you so much. Mark Allison, Kathy Miller, both on county council. They came into the den right here on WCRS Radio. Bye-bye, everybody. I'll be back in the morning. Take it away. Where is it? There we go. Bye-bye, everybody.